What are we waiting for?
Ready to go, sorry.
I'm here, why are we waiting?
We're ready to go. Apologies. Good evening, welcome to our school committee meeting of Wednesday, November 7th, 2018. I had to call the meeting into order and start with our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
We have a student representative tonight, Ms. Natalie Champagne, want to join us from the high school?
Hold up Natalie. It's gonna be wonderful.
Hi.
Hi.
So, in the high school, we just got our quarter one report cards, so quarter one just ended. We had homecoming a few weeks ago, there was a spirit week leading up to it with different dress-up days and stuff. We had really good participation for that. We had a pep rally on Friday for Saturday homecoming, and so there was, we celebrated like the sports teams and stuff, and we had a fun patting teacher thing that had been leading up to it, that people could like vote for which teacher they wanted. If you got, and then, sports had like a really good homecoming day, and three of the teams ended up moving on to districts and they made it to the second rounds. If you guys noticed when you came in, the school downstairs is flooded, there's some tarps up and stuff, so our hallway downstairs is blocked off. Makes it fun getting to English, it's really secluded now, so you have to go upstairs over and then down to get to some of your classrooms. This is also currently my English room, so it shuffled some things around, but everybody's really been great about it. Halloween, we had our senior dress-up day, where the seniors were able to dress up and go down to the three lower schools and did like little kinda like parade show for them. I think they really enjoyed that, we had a good turnout for that as well. Coming up, we have Toys for Tots, which is run by Student Council, and we go around during lunches to collect money through a penny war, and then we buy the toys and donate them. And GSA is also gonna be running their annual Turkey Teacher, which is a fundraiser for them, and on Friday, we have the Veterans Day Assembly.
Great.
That's at eight thirty Natalie?
Okay.
Veteran Assembly?
It's, yeah, about that, I think.
Certainly a welcome to attend if you would like to, all of you.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you Natalie. It's nice to know different ways to get around the building, now you know other ways to get around.
Brief and clear, organize yourself. Next on our agenda, we have our Public Comment and Communication. School Committee welcomes public comment on items that are within the scope of the school committee's responsibilities, and the public comment agenda item is reserved for this purpose. If anyone wants to bring anything up here, we've actually a decent audience tonight. Julie?
Two things, can we take sailing classes and add them to our agenda, and crew classes with the water that we have? Why not take advantage of something like that? I'm just kidding. On actually a more serious lighter note, circumstances are not known, and this is private information, but I just ask that you just give your kids an extra hug tonight, and just think about the members of your community, and that's all I want to say about that, but.
Thank you.
I'm glad to say that.
Okay. Any old business anyone wants to address tonight? Or any new business not on the agenda?
This is one, I should bring up my.
Sure.
Alright, so I don't want to put anybody on the spot, but I don't know if we can speak to the events that happened this past week at the high school with the bathrooms and vaping and so forth. The reason why I would like to bring it up is that I feel that we need to be supportive of the administration up here, because I feel that things were kind of misconstrued out in the community, and I feel it's very important to stand behind the decisions that were made up here last week, and I have a daughter up here, so I feel very strongly that things should be figured out, and we need to kinda discuss what we can do to help the high school administration up here, so that this can kind of get under control.
So, I don't know if Mr. Romano or Mr. Vega want to come up and speak to it, it's in their building?
Sorry guys.
So, we, we've been dealing with a lot of vaping by students at the school, and it really, there's, it's a very nefarious thing, because it's marketed, these devices are marketed to kids, they're marketed as being these harmless things that don't cause any harm. Kids think there's just water in them, but there's not, I mean, there's other things in them, and it's become pretty widespread, including kids that you wouldn't think of as kids that would get into trouble, kids that would sneak around doing these things. They've gotten very sneaky about where they put them, you know, I think every week, Mr. Vega and I have discovered a new spot where they hide them, you know, I found that last one with the, yeah. So, we find new places where they're hiding them every week too, and it's become an issue of great concern to us, especially since, you know, they can be used for things other than just the typical vape juice, they can be used for THC and other things like that. So, we took, we took some drastic steps to try to curtail it, and to try to get it under control. And I think it's, with the other geographical challenges that are going on in the building with the construction, it led to a lot of stress, and a lot of kids who haven't done anything wrong, who felt like they were being punished as well. And I think that, you know, Mr. Vega and I, it wasn't our intent, we really had the best of intentions to try to stop this from happening. The problem is, are they gonna just switch to stairwells? Are they gonna just switch to vaping in class? And there's very small devices that they're able to use pretty, pretty sneakily, so, you know, we made that decision, we, we heard how it was an issue of great consternation for a lot of kids, and I agree, you know, we shouldn't punish everybody for the actions of a growing minority, but, you know, we'll find other ways to address it, but what we would like to see is, you know, just support from parents that, that they're not facilitating their children purchasing these devices, under the belief that, well, it's better than my kid smoking. Well, it really may not, it's not, it's not like this healthy thing, it's not a great alternative to smoking, but, so I think that would be maybe what we would ask that would maybe help to support us, is to just not facilitate students buying these devices. What else do you have to say?
No, just researching ways of trying to, you know, whether we can put something in the bathrooms, there's some, there's sensors out there, software apps, but they're, they're very costly, you know, and it's something that we'll look into, we'll continue to research, and if we can do it, we'll definitely do it. And I know other schools have them, I don't know around the area, but I know other schools throughout the country have these kind of devices in their bathrooms, and then that's one way I think we can do it, 'cause I don't know how else we can.
Yeah.
Combat this, because it's just a matter of, you know, going through bathrooms all the time, it just takes up all our time, if we're gonna continue to do that.
So, and you guys shouldn't have to do that, I'm sorry, that's, that's just not, and I feel like it's, things have been set up here, and nice things have been done for these kids to educate them, and, you know, it's been, you guys have had things here to show them that it's not a positive thing to be doing. You're doing your job, and I feel like we need to figure out what we need to do to help you guys, because it is an epidemic, it is an issue, it is illegal, I mean, they shouldn't be doing it anyways, it's.
Right.
And you guys shouldn't have to be figuring out who's doing it and when and where, I mean, you're here to do a job, and that's kind of, I feel like it's taking your time, and I don't feel like the community is supporting the problem, it's a big problem, and it's, it is affecting all students, not just, you know, some, so, I think that, you know, while you guys made that decision with the bathrooms, you didn't tell them they didn't have privileges to use the bathroom, and they're not thinking about all the children that are involved. There's a huge epidemic with drug addiction, and this is the stepping stone to that stuff, and that's what people should be thinking about, not worried about the bathrooms being guarded or controlled.
Exactly.
That's my two cents, and I feel like we need to do what we need to do to help you guys, whether we talk about getting censors, whatever the next step is, I think that this isn't going away, so.
No.
Where, I mean, I don't know what you guys think, but.
I just have a question, because I know it's been brought up like to the athletes as, you know, this has become one of the things that if you get caught, you're, are you finding that to be a deterrent?
With? That it's an MIA violation?
You know, it, is that helping at all? You know, I mean, are there?
I don't, honestly, I don't think so.
Because that's my question, is, is, I'm, you know, as a parent, I'm, I'm not, I'm not seeing anything that shows that that's really stopping some of these kids, they don't.
No, and I would say, I mean, you could say, did it stop kids from drinking, did it stop them from, you know, and maybe, maybe not, the MIA violations, I mean, but, you know, I mean, I think there's, there's, with the vaping, there's almost a blatant flaunting of it, too, of their use of it, and, and this feeling like they're, we live in a state with a very permissive culture about things, you know, we're the, we're the big, you know, smoke weed everyday state, and I think that that lends itself, that permissive culture that we have in the state lends itself to kids doing things that they shouldn't be doing. I can't fix society, but I can, you know, I'll try to find a way to fix this building and stuff. It is an MIA violation, if we do catch a kid, you know, I hate to tell a kid, you lose a quarter of your season because you were vaping, but you're, they're going to, and we haven't run into that yet, but I mean, the, I would be shocked if it's less than a third of the kids in the school vape at one point or another. If it's less than that, I would be, I would be shocked. If you told me it was half, I wouldn't be surprised at all. So, I think it's only sooner or later that some student is gonna lose a quarter of their season because they wanna vape raspberry juice in, you know, in English class. So, you're trying to get ahead of the problem, but I've talked to other principals, and they, I don't want to say that they're giving up, but they don't know what else to do either.
Right.
So, you know, we'll keep plugging away at it, but, you know, we'll try and find, you know, proactive ways, not just, you know, okay, we've caught you, now you're suspended, or we've caught you, now you've lost a quarter, you know, your, your games. We'll keep trying to find the proactive ways to address it, but, keep working at it.
So, to me, it's, it's, it's an ongoing societal thing, it's no different than when, when I asked, stand out in front of the bathroom and kids signed in, it sounded like smoking cigarettes in 1983 was prevalent, then it was smoking marijuana, then it was whatever else. We've had other things where kids have gone into the bathrooms and have done some, some damage. We have collectively addressed it with, with students in the past, so, and I think that we've been able to effectively address it. We have provided some education on vaping to the students, or have we, have we not? I thought we did earlier in the year?
Health classes, yeah.
Can we do a group presentation on the impacts of vaping and so forth? So, you know, you try to provide education on the adverse consequences, and perhaps it's time to do, to do some more presentation on it. You can look into, and the censors, Desi has sent those along to me, you know, finding the funding for them, and then also my, my biggest concern is, are they something that the kids are just going to, you know, destroy on us and so forth? So, I think more than anything else, and I mentioned this to Josh recently, that it might be time to get together with the classes and, and address it, and, you know, one of the things that has happened in the past is, is they sort of self-police each other. This is, the, the way in which it's designed is devious in its, in its intention from the very beginning, they look like a thumb drive, there's a reason why they look like a thumb drive, they clearly were not, they, they could claim that it was, it was being created for those who were going to try to stop smoking, but if that's the case, why does it look like a thumb drive? What's the relationship? So, clearly there is, they are victims of marketing that's gone on, that's being addressed, I think, as well throughout the legislatures, they are trying to attack that and, and address that. The, the issue becomes, you've got 400 kids, you've got obstructions in the hallways, how do you get them into just one bathroom, and, and, and that's an impact, and like Josh said, the majority of our kids in our building, we, we don't have any reservations or concerns about, therefore, they are sort of victimized by this as well. So, really, the, the responsibility for us is to find a way to convince kids that they, A, shouldn't be vaping, and B, more importantly, they shouldn't be vaping in school, that they're compromising the, the culture of the building, and if they have found it, they're held accountable. It's, it's now, we changed that in the handbook, so it's no longer a smoking violation, it's a drug violation, right? So, is that three days or five days out of school?
Starts with three, yeah.
Starts with three. So, I mean, there is a significant consequence to it, but, you know, I think, I think that it's, we've been able to in the past get a hold of things and, and address it, because we, because of the nature of the small school and the kids that we've got, I would suggest that we take that avenue and, and see if we can't reason with them, explain the consequences, the concerns, and enlist their participation. For the most part, they're usually pretty good about these things, so, kind of my thoughts. I mean, the censors are an option, I, I don't know if they'll just knock them off the, off the, off the ceiling or not, but they are an option.
Can I just comment to one thing?
Yeah.
When you just went over the policy, I thought that it was changed that it's an in-school suspension first, or no?
No, no, this is.
I thought that we were discussing doing that.
So, it, so originally, this, it was under the category of smoking, or cigarette smoking, and, and because of the nature of what's used in the vapes, they are considered now a drug paraphernalia, and it is, so therefore, it carries a different consequence for their, for their actions. That was something that we discussed last year, I remember Desi presented on it, as, as a change in the way in which the, the offense was viewed.
Another thing that Mr. Orne and I are working on is a, is kind of a program to try to alleviate suspending kids and sending them out for three days versus like a five-day program where they, where they come down during lunch, they, they read article, they read an article, we have it all set up, it's on Google Classroom, could have it all set up, they read the article, they have to write a review on it, a reflection on it for one day, and the next day do the same thing, you know, and then at the end of five days, we get together, we talk a little bit, you know, and if they, happens again, then it's, it's a longer program, but it's all, it's to educate them on the health hazards of, of doing it. So, that's the program, that's something that Mr. Orne and I are still trying to figure out and finalize and bring forward.
So, it's basically, it's, it's an in-house cessation program, and we also provide information for them, they can go into, enroll in a, a cessation program outside of the school setting, because really, what you're looking for is for them not to do it.
Right.
So, that's really the, the primary goal of it, so, yeah, it is, it is a, I mean, and we see, we've seen some of it at the middle school as well, and Brian's had to deal with that, very, you know, limited, but, but he has seen some of that, so, yeah, I mean, when you promote it, the kids.
Yeah, right. Well, yeah, and what teenager doesn't want to feel like they're getting over something on their principal and teachers?
Right.
So, it's, it's, you know, marketed directly for that.
Alright, thank you gentlemen, appreciate it. Thanks. With that, we'll turn over to Superintendent's report, Mr. Mainz.
Okay, so, I guess we would probably label this as new business, but I thought maybe the committee and the public might like to get an update as to what has happened, because this, the water issue that did happen, happened since our last meeting, so there has, we haven't had a chance to properly address it with the committee. I know that everybody's aware of it, but I thought it would be helpful to share the information with the committee so that everybody's on the same page. So, in, in a biology lab downstairs, over the weekend, it was the weekend before, a pipe basically corroded away, and it allowed the water to escape, and I think Desi had it pinned down to like 12 o'clock, 1 o'clock on a Saturday, and not, not discovered until 6:30 on a Monday. So, the water was infiltrating, the water worked its way from the lab out into the hallways, down into other classrooms, across the hall into the, the room directly below us, which is a, which is a computer lab, had been a computer lab, it's not a computer lab any longer, into the school resource officers' room, into the custodian's room, into the, the workstation between the two science classrooms, into the adjoining science classroom, down the hallway, into the bookroom, into the IT closet, down the hallway into the computer lab at the start of the English wing, and actually up the English wing a little bit into Ms. Mayo's classroom, which is the first English classroom, and an adjoining small resource classroom. And from the lab at the English wing, it actually got under the walls, and in, just a little bit into the, there's the small resource room in, in the English wing as well. So, in, in all, in all total, the neutralization room as well, and the electric room, and also the in-school suspension room, which is really a, a conference room, it's not really the in-school suspension. So, totally, 16, I believe, 16 rooms total have been impacted by the, the water that, that escaped. The water was cleared up immediately on Monday morning, the insurance company, Ms. Keegan contacted the insurance company, the service master people were here sometime that afternoon, and began the process of assessing the, the level of damage. As a result, in order to dry the rooms effectively, they have partitioned off with plastic containment, that hallway from the science wing down to the English wing, and over to the main lobby, basically, if you think about this room downstairs, that hallway out there, it's all the way from there, all the way back to the English wing. So, that's all been quadrant off. We can still access the four rooms in the history wing, students have to go through classrooms in order to get into the rooms, but they can't get to them. We are still able to access the English rooms, except for Ms. Mayo's, so there's four classrooms that are being accessed down there. One of the classrooms that was for academic support has been switched to environmental science, Mr. Wagenheim has been moved in there. We have, we are now using, presently using C208 as an English classroom, the room behind is now being used as a academic support classroom. Students who had lockers in the hallway that runs down to, from the, the science room down to the English wing, mostly seniors and some, in some juniors, they unfortunately had to take all of their belongings out, we have been able to provide them with other lockers. Unfortunately, they are the lower lockers, the dreaded lower lockers that no one really wants to be in, because when you stand up and the guy's locker's open and you don't pay attention, you hit your head off, somebody drops their chemistry book on you, or spills their coffee on you, or whatever it might be. But we, we inform the students that it is temporary and, and so forth. So, all the classes have been relocated, the biology class is actually in the art room next door, so, the, the administration did a great job of reassigning everybody, I can't express to you how great the kids were, as well as the faculty, and we didn't lose a beat, we kept right on going through school and, and didn't have to shut down, and, and we're making progress. Now, that being said, as Natalie mentioned, some new travel patterns have been created, that is one of the downsides, is because we've limited, eliminated a main thoroughfare, the hallways and the stairwells that are being used are getting obviously crowded. But the kids are being pretty good about it, I think, at this point, we're still able to function well. We did address the issue with the, with parents by way of a one-call, we have had a few meetings with the representatives from the insurance, with the service master people, Ms. Keegan, myself, and Mr. Collette met today with them as our, as a follow-up meeting. At this point in time, there are a number of rooms in which the wallboard has been cut out, we have had drying fans and, and drying agent being used in, in most of the rooms, at this point, the, have, the fans have been removed in most of the rooms, we are still drying some additional rooms. The book, in the bookroom, all of those cabinets and all the books have been taken out there in a pod out in the parking lot. The process now is to continue drying, and eventually is to hopefully get the, the petitions down so that we can again be able to coexist, we talked a little bit about that today. One of the things that I'll need to meet with Desi and Josh on is to identify, prioritize the rooms that we would want them to work on to, to allow us to access those rooms again as quickly as possible, develop a plan to allow us to coexist so that they can still keep their materials and, and stuff in, in the hallway, but also allow our students to access the halls and go back to using their lockers. That would have to be something that, that we'd have to be assured that there would be no dangers or possibilities of injury before we would do that. The, I guess the, the final piece of it all is that this appears that it's going to be a somewhat protracted process. I do not believe that we will be back whole by the next meeting that we have. I believe that it could be six, eight weeks. One of the big issues that we're gonna have is that in the biology room, the lower cabinets and workstations, all got water, all need to come out, so we'll need to replace them. They may in fact, because the quality that we put in was really good originally, finding replacements for that might be difficult, so we'll need to find replacements for that. The countertops will also be an issue, keep in mind that the, the two labs that will need some repair do also contain water, do also contain gas and electricity, so we would need people to come in and, and do that as well. So, I think the biology room is probably gonna be off for a while, the good news is that we might be able to bump that biology classroom to the, the room next door, which had a modest amount of damage, her, that room was, was, the biology room was the most significantly damaged, that and the computer lab at the other end, which is the business, the business lab. So, that's sort of a, an update on the, the issue. If there's one thing that I've realized in 10 years that's common with, with Douglas, it is water.
Yeah.
Water, water, water. I don't know if you would like to add anything beyond that, I think I've covered it as, as well as I can.
Do they have dehumidifiers in there too?
Everything's going, it is, I mean, there was, there were so many things in this building.
Loads of machines.
The, when, when they, when they first arrived, when we started walking them through, I, actually, when Desi called me on Monday morning, and I believe his, his expression was, "Oh, it's bad." And he wasn't lying, it's.
As long as we get the moisture dried up, because you don't want mold.
Yeah, yeah, well, they're, they're, they're very, they're very succinct in that, and they.
That's the first thing, they come, and they're in immediately, really, they.
So, we've looked at all possibilities of where there might be water, and they, they're mitigating all of that, they will, and they won't, they won't let us do anything other than make sure that it is 100% safe.
Yep.
So, but it will be, it'll be a gradual process, the biology lab will probably be the last thing that gets finished, that and probably the, I believe that the main hallway, the tiles in the main hallway in the biology room are probably gonna have to come up, that's something that they could do probably at night in, or on the weekend, to try to get it over, over, over a period of time, I mean, so we will have some inconvenience with that, but we'll get back to, we'll get back to whole in, in due time, and again, we're just gonna have to persevere, one of our, one of our core values, perseverance, as Niasse was, was learned to say, we, perseverance is a core value, and we will persevere in this. The kids have been great, the teachers have been great, and what can you do? Nothing you can do. So, that's, yeah, enough jokes, I don't want anybody to talk about the pool any longer on the third floor. There is no pool on the third floor, and, and we don't want to revisit it.
Anything has to do with water, yeah.
Just along the lines of what, what can you do? We had a brief conversation, and the only idea I had was, you know, can we, can we work with our fire and police departments around possibly getting some early detection on something like this during their patrols on the weekend, have them stop in, into the building and, and check on things, I don't know if that's something that, you know, we can, we can address with them, and.
I did mention that, Courtney was at another meeting, so she wasn't able to attend, but at the town administrator, I had a department head meeting, and I was present there, and I did mention that that is something that I would like to explore with the police and the fire department, to see if it's something viable. We're also looking at custodial staff possibly as well.
The weekend.
Maybe to be able to, to keep an eye on it during the weekends, you know.
I talked to the facilities manager about if we know it's going to be a torrential downpour. It does cost money to have them come in, but it just seems like there's always something, so we did talk about having somebody come in.
Yeah, which was, which was the previous issue, but this one had nothing to do with rain, it was just, you know, that's a pipe.
So, you've got it going both ways, you've got raining, you've got so much water.
We've always had rain things too, yeah.
If you, if you think of the elementary building, those classrooms all have sinks in them, they all have sinks in them.
Yeah.
And it's plenty, there's, there's certainly plenty of water that's, that's being used in all these buildings, so, probably, possibly a combination of, of all of it, but it has been broached, and we probably will have to revisit it again as we go forward.
Okay.
Alright, so that was, I guess, new business, just to get everybody up to date, because we had not met. So, quick update on Educational Alliance and Blackstone Valley Superintendent's Consortium, I don't know Josh if you want to join, you're certainly welcome to do so, but. But just to follow up, keeping the committee informed, we have completed our that the initial phase of our obligation with Educational Alliance. We have received, we have received information from them, things that we can use. I have informed them at this time that we're we we don't anticipate going forward for the time being. I have not said that we would totally end our relationship because there is some, there is some consulting value that they really can provide to us, but we're not at that point, so we don't need to have any ongoing continued services with them as of right now. But the last time we met, and I believe Josh was up here with me at the time, we had talked to you a little bit about a meeting and with the Blackstone Valley Superintendent's Consortium, which has been in existence for quite a number of years, twelve school districts. And last Friday, we hosted at the mil- the middle school, a meeting in which eleven of the twelve school, I'm sorry, ten of the twelve schools were able to be present, which is the largest we've ever had. And we had some spirited conversation around thinking about new ways to do what we do, to the point where we talked about what Josh had presented to the committee, developing some pathways that we can offer to our students, that when they finish taking the listing of courses at the bottom of their transcript, it says that they've completed an environmental science pathway, and and it details the courses that they've taken, just to make them more competitive in 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 applying to colleges. Interestingly, Oxbridge is already doing that. Josh has reached out to East Spencer, Spencer East Brookfield, and also to Assabit.
Assabit Valley.
Assabit Valley. And so he, Josh is establishing a lot of links on this this very topic. I felt, and Josh chime in by all means, I felt that it was very well received, and they have formed a subcommittee to explore, can we establish some some better relationships to allow our students and their students to access things that they might not be able to access because we just cannot offer them? So for example, one of the things that came out of it was a conversation about AP Chemistry with some of the teachers at the end of, some of the principals at the end. And we all want to offer AP Chemistry because it's so valuable to so many college programs that kids can 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 enroll in, but you don't always have ten, twelve, twenty kids interested in taking AP Chemistry. Can we put that as an online distance type of learning activity, but also have some internship piece to it like we did with the MIMZ program, so that students from other schools can access it that don't have AP Chemistry, AP Microeconomics, for example? We have it, most of the schools do not have it, very valuable if you're if if you're a student interested in in a business program. Well, there are, if none of the other schools in the valley have it, rather than them creating it, the students who might have an interest could could join on with our teacher who could do it as an online. There's a lot of semantics that need to be worked out, but the upside to it was that they've been, they've immediately agreed to form a subcommittee. It's meeting very soon, and the the goal of this is to really come up with a a solid plan that will benefit and allow us to offer more programs. Going back to the whole issue, the reason for me bringing up the Educational Alliance piece of it, and I I did speak with with Brett on this because he had asked the question, is that we were at a point where where there was some anticipation that we were going to apply for Chapter seventy-four certification, which is the vocational agricultural vocational certification with the state, to which point that is when we basically indicated to them that we did not anticipate going forward for a myriad of reasons, one of which is that we presently have six still students going to Norfolk, three of them are seniors. We will have a reduced number next year. The hope is that we'll be at a smaller number. It really was an awful big lift to to try to bring a complete vocational program for three students. The other piece of it was, in order to offer that vocational program, we would need to offer large machinery, which we don't have large machinery, exotic animals, large animal, small animal, ornithology, all kinds of things that we would have had, we would have to offer that we really were not interested in. The niche that we're interested in is animal and plant sciences, that we still believe that we can still do, and we we are still pursuing that as a pathway that could be open to other school districts. So there's a long overview of follow-up to what's transpired over the last year. So Josh, anything that you add to that?
So in addition to collaborating on electives that that any one school might be too small to offer on a regular basis, but that we could collaborate on, what Assabit Valley does is they have a co-op with Hudson and AMSA, the Advanced Math and Science Academy, and they run as a co-op an early college program with with Quinzigman Community College, where kids can take up to twelve credits in high school, and they're they're meeting a high school requirement and a college requirement at the same time. And QCC would love to set up a co-op among the valley schools too. And I I've I've talked with the the principal at Assabit Valley, and they love the program. It's very low cost to them. Basically, the school provides the books, the kids pay, I think it's two hundred and fifty dollars per course, and, you know, so for a thousand dollars, they pick up twelve credits before they've started college. So and QCC would love to start this with us. So, you know, I think I'd like to see us, if we, if I can't get the other principals in the valley on board, we were asked if if we would like to join Hudson, and they only, they meet in person once, so, you know, we probably provide transportation for the class, for them to get together, and then the rest of it is done online. So.
Is Oxbridge already doing that, I think, Josh? Is Oxbridge already?
Oxbridge has something that they're doing with QCC. I need to talk to Mike Rubin and see what it is that they're doing, because they're not part of this co-op. But, you know, the the idea of co-opping is if you, you know, they they need to have twenty kids in a course for it to run. And so if you don't have twenty students at at Douglas, but you might be able, you could probably get twenty students if you have three or four schools working together. So and that's what Hudson, AMSA, and Assabit had done.
You know, one of the conversations that always has come up around budget time was the idea of of collaboration or 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 regional regionalization. This is truly that, very much like a regional special education collaborative, Coffee or, yeah, Coffee or Grow School, types of those types of schools, similar to that, but just in a different a different vein, which is which is to to provide academic opportunities. So it's the next iteration of what we're doing. We we're still working, Josh is working feverishly to try to get a couple of these pathways up and running and in place for next year. And of course, the 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 issue with that is that our program of studies is usually produced and 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 given out in January at the very latest, the beginning of February. So he's still working and trying to get some of those in place to offer to our students. And we had talked about revamping our business program. This is a great way to do it. You know, one of the things that came up out of out of the conversation was, one of the, one of the superintendents had mentioned about their business program and and their economics classes and so forth, and immediately I I responded, we don't offer economics right now. We don't have a, we don't have a teacher available to teach the economics class. They have small numbers. Can we collaborate? Can we do this online? Is there a way, just trying to be creative and nick outside the box to provide more opportunities without having to hire numbers of staff? And you're not going to find a point two economics teacher. I think we've been through that conversation a number of times. So that's sort of an update as to where we're going, and just wanted to make sure that the committee was in the loop with with all of that.
No, I think this is very encouraging. This is very good stuff. You know, it's some exciting developments and.
My sense is, Joshua, you could tell me if you if you disagree, but my sense is that it really looks like a twenty twenty-one rollout.
Yeah.
I think it's it's it, you know, because.
For a collaborative?
Yeah. I just don't think that you can get anything in place for everybody to do their course signups in February and March. Everybody does them at the same time, basically, to really be, you know, effectively in place, and you don't want to hurry it. So I think we can do things in our own building that we want to do for pathways, but then this whole collaborative piece, I think, is a twenty twenty-one rollout.
Yeah, and then you can continue expanding those pathways and making them longer and more complete and, you know.
There's a couple I think we can roll out for next year. There's like a global competency one, there's a STEM pathway they think we roll out, but when you want to get to more specialized ones in in visual arts and and music and things like that, I think we need to be able to up the course offerings that we have for kids and and build some structure around it, so.
Which is the conversation we've had, people who are teaching classes that doesn't allow them to teach their area of expertise, music, art, so that you cannot offer them because they're just not available, their teaching assignment right now is health, family consumer science, family life. Those are, those are some of the issues that we run into. So, you know, be creative, and and Josh and I have talked a number of times about, you know, carefully positioned hire can address a couple of problems, but also create a couple of solutions at the same time. That's what we'll be looking for. But don't go too far, because I believe MCAS is next, so.
Oh, okay.
Anybody but Mr. Vega is going to come up and.
How do we want to line up?
Participate.
Oh, my school's first, right?
I think, John, you know, I need to bring up a seat. I count four, but there's five of us.
High school's first.
Yeah.
Do we need to?
That's Mr. Scott.
Mr. Scott?
Yep.
You on it?
All right.
Do we need to turn off the front lights so you can see?
It's the middle one, middle one, I think, Josh. Yeah. Nope, maybe there's not. That's the one. So we had some debate about this today, which was how to present this. And I will give you a hint. Somebody drew the short straw, and they're not sitting at that side of the table.
Courtney?
Yes.
Here I am.
Ooh, okay, that's good.
So here we are. So I'm going to try to expedite this as best I possibly can.
Really? You promise? I don't know. I'm holding you to it.
Now, why is everybody laughing at that?
Well, maybe because I'm verbose, but I'm also because there's probably a hundred pages here, so. May I abridged, an abridged document for my my administrator today. I abridged it, then I abridged it further so that it was smaller.
I've read three pages of notes myself in case Ms. Ramey misses anything.
I don't think he'll miss it.
All right. So here we are. We're going to try to present the MCAS performance for Douglas across all grade levels that have been assessed. Our objective would be to present highlights, but also to address any areas of highlight, those areas of strong performance, but also areas where there's there are concerns. Speak to how we're addressing concerns as well. For the the hundreds of thousands of people that are watching us on cable television and for our one guest in the audience, there are a lot of numbers in this presentation. Being a history person, not always partial to numbers, Mrs. Socia, being a math person, sees great relevance and value in them. So we are going to kind of look at them as quickly as we can. So talk about it in a collective overview. We will drill down specifically to grade levels. I think the most important piece of this is to let you know that the work behind the numbers, the data and in the processing of data and the drilling for data has been done by us as as administrators. So we have looked at it all the way down to the point of individual students, areas of strength, areas of weakness. We have done it for grade levels, we have done it by academic criteria, and we have data upon data upon data. If you'd like to, I should have, I could have brought my multicolored highlighted data to indicate all of the work that we've done. The information has, we have sat and looked at it collectively. They have also sat and looked and added the data with their faculty members as well. So the information that we have unearthed and and have processed has been shared. They can speak and they will speak directly to how they're addressing it with their individual buildings, but the data is not in isolation, it is being shared. I remember all the years of teaching that the data, you couldn't access it. Now there's just too much data that you can get access to. Before, you couldn't get the data, and it really wasn't as beneficial. Now it is beneficial, and we are working with it. So the departments, academic departments at the high school, academic departments at the at the middle school, grade level teams, they've all shared and reviewed the data. Safe assumption? Okay. One thing that we we have talked about that we will, we will continue to work on this year is the need for vertical review of the data as well. It does no good for the sixth grade team to look at the data in isolation if they don't talk to the fifth grade team, if they don't talk to the seventh grade team, it's it's just sixth grade data. It needs to be shared. So when we try to get the vertical teams together, we, this is something, the thing that we would really want them to focus on, share it vertically, to look at gaps, to look at any redundancies in curriculums, to make modifications and make adjustments. So that being said. Go ahead, Mr. Romano, start clicking buttons. We've already talked about this. Some students are still operating under the legacy, some students are operating under the new gen, next generation. The high school will be going on board this year with the next generation, so all depart, all grade levels will be in the next generation. We did talk a little bit about that there are practice exams that are out there. The high school, English and and math departments will have opportunity to do some practice testing prior to the original testing. Okay? Thank you, Mr. Romano, go ahead. Okay, so here's how they, the numbers start breaking down. So if you look at it, we've been able to provide, and and this is something that the committee was looking for, I remember this being asked a number of years ago, Mrs. Socia, that they were looking for, can we look at it over years? And so here you have grade ten from two thousand twelve to two thousand eighteen, and it breaks it down by all four categories, and it gives you the opportunity to take a look at it. So the only thing I would call your attention to in this on two thousand eighteen is that sixty percent of the students were in the advanced category, thirty-five were in the proficient, for a grand total of ninety-five percent in the proficient and advanced category. And if you look at it going across, the number sixty is a high number. We've only been in that category of sixty once, and that was in two thousand and fifteen. And if you look across the bottom, one of the things that you see is that the failing number, zero one four, one one zero four. So one of the things I would tell you with that is that these numbers reflect all of our students, those included in all of our programs, and also those of the students who might be in out-of-district placements, who have been assessed in MCAS as well. So it reflects everybody. And so some of the students that you would see in the the failing category would fall into those into that category, and you'll see that in the math, and you'll see that in the science as well, just calling that out to everybody's attention. Next slide, sir. So now we go to tenth grade math. If you recall, one of the areas of concern was we saw a little bit of a dip in math the previous year. We are, again, maintaining at about forty percent at the in the advanced area, but we did increase from thirty-two to forty in the proficient, so a grand total of eighty percent in advanced and proficient. Again, looking to try to get more students up from the needs improvement into the proficient, more students from the proficient into the advanced, and the way what you do that is to provide them with the data. So that's the math in grade ten. If you look at the science grade ten, one thing I would say is that, if anything, they've been extremely consistent over the years. Again, you're seeing the number at the bottom on the two thousand eighteen under the failing category is four. It's universal in all three grade, all three subject matters. The issue is that we're at eighty, I'm sorry, seventy-six percent in the advanced proficient, which is strong. Would like to see it be a little bit higher than that. The needs improvement category tends to be students not in biology, but tends to be students in the science tech testing. Science tech is, we believe, going away. It will be phased out as a test, so students will be looking at taking biology, and then we will transition possibly into physics down the road.
Those would be the only two options they could have. They're going to drop the chemistry test, and they're going to drop the sci-tech.
Very, very small percentage.
But it is a very small percentage of kids that take the chemistry, but, and our physics teacher has taught that MCAS prep physics course before, so he's he's been around the block on teaching that before, so.
Okay, so we go to grade eight next. An area of concern here is, an area of plus is that if you look at it in two thousand seventeen and really across the board, the number of students in the advanced category was low. It did go up to nine percent this year, which is a a nice improvement. Proficient did not go up. We had a little bit of a drop in needs improvement, and the 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 area of greatest concern is is the failing piece. One of the issues of concern there is the technology piece of it, because we do not offer all of the the technology pieces. We've continued to have this problem. This is the conversation that we had about a possible additional elective at the eighth grade level that would be in the area of science, technology, and engineering added into it, because if we can take the science tech out of grade nine and bring it down to grade eight as an elective and add to it the the idea of the engineering piece, our students would, we believe, would be better prepared for the eighth grade science, and we would see a stronger performance. Again, teaching assignments would be would be part of that. So that's a concern. Grade five science in in technology and engineering. On the positive, again, if you look at two thousand seventeen, there was not one student in the advanced. This year, there is twelve percentage in the advanced, and thirty-nine, an increase in proficient. So overall, we went up nicely in grade five science. Again, an area of concern, although it's a significant. Again, an area of concern, although it's a significant drop from the 2017 year, would be the number of students in the failing category from 24% down to 10%. We have always presented to the committee a comparison as to how Douglas is doing compared to the state. So, I will give you a quick overview here. So, grade 10, English, presently, as I mentioned, 95% of our students are in advanced and proficient. The state average is 91%. We are outperforming the state in advanced and proficient in grade 10, English. We have consistently outperformed the state in that area. If you go to grade 10 comparison, Douglas and the state with regards to math, if you add up the advanced and proficient, we're at 80% of our students are in that category. The state average is 78, again, outperforming the state. We would like to see us move that number up, again, a little bit more, drive more, more students up from the needs improvement into the advanced or proficient category. If you look at grade 10, science, we are just above state average, 76% to 75%. Again, the only area of concern is the area of warning and looking to improve on that level. We go to grade eight. State-wise comparison, we are just slightly above grade eight, science, 37% to the state average of 35%. Still alarming and still concerning is the warning at 21%. It is state average, but that's not something that we want to be at the state average in. And we just addressed that a little bit about the possibility of an elective. Grade five, science, 51% of our students are in the advanced proficient. The state average is 48, so again, outperforming the state average there. So, across the board, you saw us outperforming the state in all of those. Mr. Socia provided us with a overview of grade three through eight collectively on state averages. I would call your attention to meets for Douglas. And if you look at combining the exceeds in meets across grade three, four, five, six, seven, and eight, each and every one of them is above the state average for advanced and meets, exceeds and meets. So, across the board, all grade levels, they are outperforming the state average, in some cases modestly, and other areas, quite a, quite a good number. So, for example, in grade three, if you look at it in English, we're at 63%. The state average is only 52%. That's a, that's a good number. That's a good, that's a good plus. If you look at fourth grade, the same thing. We're at 71% advanced and proficient on meets and exceeds. 53 is the state average, again, well above. So, there's a lot of things to celebrate in that as well, so call your attention to it. If you go to grade three and eight through math, a number of areas of concern arise, but there are a couple of areas to celebrate. If you look at grade four, six, and eight, they are all performing above state average. If you look at grade three, it is at state average, 50/50. And if you look at grade five, it is below state average. And that is the one area that probably is the most predominant that we've seen across the board is the grade five math, whereas 34% of our students are exceeding or meeting, the state average is 46%, so we are below, and that does raise concern. Same in grade seven, 37% for Douglas, but the average, state average is 46%. So, there's a great example of the data that we talked about. Not only is it based on standards, the data that we shared, but it's also individual students and the standards as well. Mr. Socia does a great job of presenting us in the valley. I believe there's like 12 schools here, I think, of the consortium. So, if you look at 2018 ELA, we are the top five. This, a lot of what I saw here reflected a lot of what I saw in the AP and SATs, that information I shared with you two years ago, I believe it was, where we are in the top four or five out of these 12, 15 schools that we compared.
That's pretty consistent to where we are every year in English.
Right.
The top third.
So, if you look at us in comparison, we're right there with, with all of the schools in the, in the valley. You see Hope Dale, BVT. We have been at the 99% as well this year. We're a little bit low with these four students in warning. If you look at the math, we tended, we have tended to be in the middle. We were, we were below the middle last year, so we have come up probably five or six numbers on this, which is a, which is a positive, should be, should be emphasized. Again, if you look at it, however, you look at the fact that there's 80% in proficient or higher, we would love to see us get up to the 91, 92, and get into the top three or four schools in the, in the area. Grade 10, science is a little bit concerning. Again, this is mostly science, technology. Our biology numbers really are very strong. The science, technology numbers tend to be a little bit low, and they have, therefore, we've dropped down a few numbers here, down to 76%. Again, in the middle of the pack, if you will. 2018, grade eight, ELA, middle of the pack. The thing that concerns me a little bit is the differential between, say, Sutton and a Hope Dale at 69%, us at 52%. We would look to try to drive that up. I think that what Brian will tell you later on, and I want to steal his thunder, is the literacy, the focus on literacy is impacting that. It's going to take some time, but we're going to, we're driving that up. Grade eight, math, again, middle of the pack, but again, if you look at the differential, we're, you know, we're 10 percentage points below some of the other schools. That's something that we, an area of concern. They have begun working vertically, talking about standards and where we're, we're coming up short. Grade eight, science, actually, again, towards the middle, top of the middle of the pack, but the differential is still kind of concerning, that we would like to try to address that as well. Grade seven, very strong in the ELA piece, again, top three, but concerning in the math area, down towards the bottom of the, of the, this is an area of concern. It's an area that, that Mr. Delaney and the, and the faculty are aware of and working on and preparing to address. Grade six, very strong across the boards in grade six, top of the, top four across the board. Again, we could move up a little bit higher with a, with a little bit more attention to the standards and where we're falling short. This is the one, the next one, grade five, this is the one that probably drives the greatest concern. If you look at it, the same students in grade five, ELA, which is at the top of the collective at 67%, we have the same students taking the math piece, and we're down in the bottom three. That is an area of significant concern that Mr. Bell is aware, has had meetings with, staffing on, and we are, again, addressing that in a collaborative manner. They have met with other grade levels, and we are trying to address that. So, that was the one area. And then, grade five, again, strong in the science category. So, grade five is, that, it's the math, math piece that's the most concerning. And then, the last couple would be grade four, very strong, very, a lot to be celebrated, 71%, you know, two, number two on the ELA comparison, number three in the math comparison, a lot of positives there. Same thing with grade three, top of the, top two in ELA, top five in, in math. Again, math could be, get driven up a little bit higher. There's a good differential between us and the top numbers there. Okay, so, that is, I thought, a pretty quick run through the numbers. I'm not sure if anybody has any direct questions that they want to address before we talk about individual schools.
The grades that you used here, are those the grades from last year?
Yes. So, those are all the 2018, but we also tried to provide data back to 2012 to give you a, a little bit of a broader perspective of how we've been performing over the six years. Anything? No questions? Okay. All right, am I, am I still on?
I think so, you.
So, I think I talked a little bit about this already. I don't want to beat the drum, but we have, over the last two years that I've been in this capacity, if you know anything about me, don't leave me alone in a room with highlighted, highlighters and data, because I'll, I'll just go to town on it. And then, unfortunately, I knock on doors and I said, here's your packet, here's your packet, and so forth. But we are collectively working on it. They are taking major steps to, to address these areas. I said this in the beginning of the year, and I know that some of you were at the first day presentation, MCAS is one assessment. It's a snapshot in time. It is a reflection of how a student did on a standard on a particular day. It is not an all-encompassing end-all-to-be-all, but it does provide us with, with usable data to look at, for example, if, in fact, it's, student has difficulty adding decimals. We can tell you that. If the class had trouble adding decimals, we can tell the teacher that. And we have provided that information so that they can take steps to be more effective in the classroom and better prepare their students to address those areas. So, there are a number of things that we are presently doing with regards to MCAS. There's, there's the continued work in Rubicon, which is something that collectively we will need to dress, address going forward. We need to get back into Rubicon. We did do a lot of work a number of years ago, four, five years ago. It needs to be an ongoing, the NEAS process, I think Josh addresses that, that there is a need to get back into it, not just at the high school. It should be all grade levels, need to get back in there to make it the living curriculum, the actually, the actually taught curriculum that we see in the classrooms. And again, I mentioned to you about the, the need to spend time with vertical teams, again, going forward. That was something that was a area of great strength when I arrived here 10 years ago. Again, because of budgetary constraints and because of the, the cost of hiring subs, we, we had to back off of that. I think now we need to get back into making a commitment with it, because it did prove valuable earlier. It will continue to prove valuable. It's an area, I think, that we need to focus our attention on.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
With the science scores being kind of on the lower end, I know that, I believe that the elementary school recently got a new program, right? What about the middle school? Middle school?
The state standards have been a shifting goalpost, and they keep changing.
Same at the high school as well. Brian's absolutely correct, the high school as well.
There's a standard that, there's, you look at the graph, how they're doing, and then everything, not, not one kid got it right, which saying there's questions there that no one's even ever seen before.
Right.
So, we're really trying to wait for, as you saw, you know, where we can monitor progress, third, fourth, fifth, sixth, all the way through. You get a snapshot in fifth grade, and then, three years later, you got another one, you don't know where you're falling.
Right, that's tough.
And then, they've changed it twice in between there. So, it's just been something that we are trying to hold the line to, to, you know, do our best to improve, but we, you know, know our core standards that are nationally recognized, and these kids are going to need to know as 21st century learners, while the state figures out how they're going to, again, measure our ability to kick that field goal once the post stop.
Right.
So, we, we recognize it, and we're trying not to make ourselves crazy over it, and just kind of focus. And as we've talked in other school committee meetings, we are looking to the future about how to bring the school to the next level around STEM and things of that nature. So, we're, we're focusing on the positive, identifying the negative, and not letting the, the science knock us off our.
Right.
Balance in terms of, as we try to chase something that we're not quite sure where it's going.
And one of the things that, at the middle school, that's obviously a buzz and people are talking about are the trips, the field trips and the exposure that we've provided the students, that Brian and the staff have provided the students in this, in this area to generate some, some curiosity and interest around, around STEM issues as well. And again, as we, as we mentioned, Brian was able to add a couple of new electives that really were missing, the health piece, which was really significantly missing at the, at the middle school. We know that bringing somebody in who can do STEM and to support what's going on in the science classrooms will pay dividends. It's just a question of, can we bring that person onboard?
And one of the things I'll, I just would like to add, as Mr. Maynes alluded to earlier, once we know what we're supposed to do, we put together a plan and we execute it.
That's tough when you don't know.
That, that will happen once we're confident that it's, it's static rather than a dynamic, dynamic environment.
So, I think, I don't know who's, who's up first.
Me.
I didn't even know Mrs. Zirkat was first.
I am first.
All you, Mrs. Zirkat.
All right. So, I think the main thing that we want to pay attention to is that the principals are going to speak after me, okay? But we need to keep in mind that all of the students within the schools and within the district will benefit from their specific school-based action plans. What I'm going to speak to is the special education intervention plan, okay? So, some students require additional interventions in order to reach the highest potential with the MCAS. Accommodations specific to MCAS are discussed on an annual basis at the students' reevaluation meetings or their annual meetings. All intervention methods that are presented for English Language Arts and math within this presentation also apply to science. So, you'll see some accommodations and interventions sort of run across curriculums. And most intervention strategies apply to each grade level, school, and are adapted or amended according to content and student need. So, basically, what I did from my end, you know, we, we run a lot of meetings, and there's a lot of different accommodations that the MCAS allows for. But we didn't just want to list all of the accommodations that are necessary for that one day of testing. So, I thought the best idea for this would be to reach out to the special education teachers across the entire district and, and talk about the main intervention plan that they put in place, so the main accommodations used to assist the kids. I could have listed literally 100 accommodations for each area, but I've put the main, the main things that assist kids with special education needs. So, again, when I speak to ELA and when I speak to math, this also does apply to the science piece. So, for English Language Arts, including reading and writing, a review of higher, a higher level skills such as drawing conclusions and making differences, model thinking out loud to assist with comprehension skills, use of context clues, read questions carefully in underlying key elements slash parts of text, utilize approved graphic organizers, approved meaning by the Department of Education, guided practice to retrieve evidence in text, and additional practice with brainstorming ideas related to a given topic. So, the way that we came to these being the, the main accommodations used is basically, simply, these are the ones that are most utilized across the district, but also in analyzing areas of weakness within reading and writing. These represent what kids need to be successful. So, so that speaks to the ELA and, including the reading and writing. And for math, I think a lot of math, what I saw through the information provided to me, but also in the conversations that I had with the teachers, repetition is always going to assist kids with special education needs, and all kids, actually. But in the area of math, that element of repetition is even more strongly needed, let's put it that way. So, the first and most important thing is practice using the MCAS math reference sheet consistence, consistently. This is something that has to be approved by the DESI. Guided practice to break apart complex word problems. So, what you see a lot of within the MCAS is that, again, the, the curriculums are running across each other. So, even though they're testing on math, reading is incorporated. So, if you have a kiddo that has difficulty with reading, that could, in, in essence, affect math. Organize extensive word problems into graphic organizers to eliminate excess information, so breaking it down and making it smaller. Visualize and draw out complex problems into pictures for visual support. Build fact fluency through repetition of skills and the show, tell, explain method. So, these, these are basically, again, the, the main, the main things that play into the classroom. And what these end up doing is translating at the meetings into the MCAS accommodation needs. So, from this point, we will move to Mr. Romano, who's going to speak to these school responses. He has high school.
So, every year when the, when the MCAS scores come out, the departments and I get together and we, we do an analysis of the data. And so, as we look at the questions, we start with the questions that we did very poorly on, and we, you know, we look at the questions, we look at what students put for wrong answers, we try to figure out why, and we look at which standards the students did poorly on, because usually you can find like, oh, this is a standard, that might be a standard that you can revise how you teach it or, or review it better. And what we found, for example, with science is that, well, the students did very poorly on cell structure and classification. And then, we look at the questions that we did really well on, and the same thing. And we found that the standards they did really well on were cell structure and classification. There wasn't, there are no standards in science or, or math that we could say, we really need to start teaching this better. So, instead, we started to look at, like, we could add more, if we could fit more statistics into our math. into our math curriculum, we could get more kids up to advanced. Well, it's kind of hard to jam one more thing in there, but they're going to try to figure out where. They're also doing, in the math department, they're doing some work with some new intervention strategies for math students. So as a student, you know, as they're going through and they're doing their formative assessments, and they see that the student's not doing well, they're trying to come up with some better ways to reteach that material and review that material with students. But what we found too is that test-taking strategies are part of the problem too, because of the way that they're reading the questions. So we found that on this question, the way it was written, they knew how to use the quadratic formula. On this question, the way it was written, they had no clue, and they had to use the same skill that they showed that they could use three questions earlier. So there's sort of a test-taking strategy that goes with that too, and I think we need to focus in on that when we do our MCAS review courses that we do. The other big thing that we have to do with the departments is that there's going to be these new tests, as Mr. Mainz said, there's going to be brand-new tests for ELA and math. And even just sort of the structure of how those tests look is very different. So the new ELA test, for example, it has three essays in it. There's a narrative essay, there's an argumentative essay, and there's, they call it something different, I call it a step procedure essay, this is how you do something. And it's, so we really need to divide up that writing to have more of it happen across the curriculum. So we're putting together a task force with the department chairs to look at how science and history can pick up more of that writing burden. Because all historical writing, when professional historians write, they're doing an argumentative essay. They're saying George Washington is the greatest because, and then they argue their point. So I want to see that the history department pick up more of that skill for students. And step procedures, how science works, and cookbooks, cookbooks or chemistry, so, of having science do more of that, this is how this happens, this is how cells divide, this is how nuclear fusion happens, whatever happens to be. So I think if they can pick up more of that burden of writing, because my English teachers are freaking out a little bit after having really unpacked the new tests and taken a look at it. And Mr. Mainz mentioned too, there's the practice test, they really need to do, students need to do those practice tests, because there is, they need to be familiar with the platform. And, you know, yeah, their kids, they pick up new platforms all the time when they go from whatever, Facebook to Snapchat to whatever they're doing now. But if they've never seen it before, and we put them in and say, hey, this test counts for your graduation, they need to have that fair chance to see how the calculator works, to see how the formula writing tool works. So we're going to put that into the schedule to do those as well. We implemented co-teaching in math and ELA, and science, actually. The goal there is try to help our students with disabilities and boost their scores up too, because that's, that's sort of the area that I think that we can get some improvement on. And so now, instead of the subject matter teacher with a paraprofessional who's taking notes and helping a student be organized, now you have another teacher in the room who is specifically trained on how to help students with disabilities learn, how to present material in different ways to students. And so I think that that's a factor that can be really successful. We've had a professional development on it, we built in time for them to plan. I think the co-teaching pairs we have, they were kind of picked to be successful this year, so we could get everybody else to see that this is a great thing. And so we'll expand on it next year. And we also have our common planning time where teachers can share their best practices. So if one teacher's doing something great, and they're getting good results from this, they can share that, they have a better avenue to share that with others. I already mentioned the after-school program. This is, we run this every year, we do a math, ELA, and science review before the test. But again, I think what we need to focus on there is really how to break down the test, because you're not going to teach two years of algebra and geometry in a 12-hour program. But I think we can give them that sort of boost on, this is how to use the formula sheet to approach a problem, and make that something that helps you.
Josh, that's a voluntary program.
It is a voluntary program, yes. For, so students that do it, they do it because they're, well, because their parents want them to do it. But it is, it's, you know, we don't force kids into that program. And then we do have a peer tutoring program to help our students, our non-students with disabilities to get some academic support. And it's kind of similar to the model that we've been using with students with disabilities too.
Okay.
All right. Who's next, middle school? Mr. Delaney?
It doesn't reach.
It won't reach him.
So you just have to...
I'll put an extension on it.
I'll speak aloud.
I can hold it for you.
There you go. Sorry, just throw some more numbers at you if you don't mind. And back to my, the point that I said, that we will make a plan and we'll execute. What I'm about to share with you is a differentiation between our scores in 2017, 2018. I'll start with ELA first. Combined scores of exceeding and meeting, we went up in sixth grade in ELA by 17%. In seventh grade, we went up by 14%. And in eighth grade, we went up by 15% in ELA. So double-digit growth in ELA scores across all three grades in a middle school between 2017, 2018. In math, again, we can't claim the same, double-digit growth, except for in sixth grade, we went up 15 percentage points in the meeting, and we went down eight points in not meeting, which is, that's good. We took, the year before, we had 12% of the kids not meeting, and then we went down to 4%. So that was, you know, again, we look favorably on that. In seventh grade, we went up in terms of meeting, we went up by eight points, and we reduced our not meeting by four points. Again, those are positives. And then in eighth grade, we increased our exceeding by seven percentage points. So the things that we're doing to address, to try to continue to grow our math scores are increasing time on learning during the school day with drill, with what we're calling more math, which is 30 minutes dedicated of math drill, three times a day for grades seven and eight, across six-day cycle.
Four times a week, or three times?
It's three times across a six-day, six-day schedule, so. And then we have, as we showed earlier, identifying not just through the state scores, but also through our own benchmarks, the deficiencies of this current sixth-grade class, and understanding who is at most need. And we have not only, again, put focused effort during math class and the more math, 30-minute block, but we also have assigned peer tutors within the school, the eighth graders working with sixth graders. We also are on the cusp of implementing a homework club available to middle school students Monday through Thursdays, and that we, again, hope that we have some more guided study available to students to help in areas of weakness at school rather than beyond our control at home. So again, we're looking for sustained growth in the literacy. I can't promise you double-digit, but I can promise you continued growth, where the class sizes are right where we need them to be to continue to grow in the manner that we've been able to produce. The writing across the curriculum, where they lost a teacher moved, they're down to four core teachers. They have a fifth class where they, the sixth graders are writing in every subject area as they did in seventh grade last year, and where the seventh grade scores went above, right across the board, across the average, which we're happy with. And again, I spoke about the peer tutoring and the more math, and that is a report on the middle school.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You want to sit here?
Oh, you're good.
No, I'll give you an extension.
I'll look at this.
So the elementary school, I think the most shocking thing when we look at the elementary data is that fifth-grade math information. Across the board, our students struggle with measurement and data from third grade, fourth grade, and fifth grade. Our fifth-grade math scores really were low overall. It didn't matter which standard we looked at, we were below the state average. And I think in talking to the teachers, I'm new to the school, but I've been in classrooms a lot, seeing what we're doing. And I think what we're seeing is that kids are going through second grade, and they're making it, third grade, they're making it, fourth grade, they're making it. But when they get to fifth grade, the concepts, all of a sudden, they have to apply all those concepts they learned in second grade and third grade and fourth grade. And it's really, it's showing itself in fifth grade, that they don't have a good mastery of the skills that they've learned. They might be able to get by with some, you know, with multiplication, they can get by by drawing an array on a seven times four problem. But when you get to 355 times 257, they can't really make that array anymore. And so those little things we teach kids to help them get by aren't working when they get to fifth grade. And so it's not just a fifth-grade problem that we have, it's a problem with second grade all the way up to fifth grade that we need to address. And so we've looked at our long-range plans, and one thing we did find is with measurement and data, it's the last unit taught every year, and MCAS happens before the end of the year. And so a lot of times, that's getting scrunched into a much shorter period of time than it needs to. And so kids aren't getting the grasp of that information that they need. So we've actually gone through our whole year's worth of plans and said, where are some lessons that we can take out and move to the end of the year? So we have enough time to give those topics the time they need. We've also really looked at worksheets. We use a lot of worksheets in the elementary school. I think if you've done any research on education, that's not how kids learn best. And so we really need to look at ways to give kids hands-on learning opportunities with math, get kids excited about math, understanding how they're going to use it in real life, not just giving them a worksheet where they're drilling and killing those problems. And so that's been a big emphasis with us as we've gotten going this year. And I was telling Mr. Mainz today, as I've gotten into classrooms the last couple of weeks, I'm really starting to see some good changes in that area, which is exciting. We don't want kids to hate math, we want kids to be excited about it. I love math, I love teaching math, I love learning about math, I want our kids to feel the same way. I don't want them to get to sixth grade with Mr. Delaney and think math is the worst subject in the world and have no buy-in with it. And so we really need to get kids excited about their learning. We also have looked at, we're using professional learning communities. So that's where our grade-level teachers get together, and we sit down and we talk about our data, we talk about our individual kids. We've had two of these meetings so far, and we do them monthly. But in these meetings, we, like this past one that we had, we had all of our data from MCAS, we had all of our AIMS web data, we also had common assessments that the teachers had used, and looked at individual kids and said, okay, this kid scored here, why are they scoring here? What are we going to do to get them to score a little higher? Was it just a fluke on this test? Was it, you know, they really don't have a mastery of the concepts, and drilling into why individual kids aren't scoring where they need to, to kind of address those things. And we're also really looking at small group instruction. I think we know that the needs of our kids are very differing. We have kids that are ready for lots of enrichment, we have kids that need a lot of extra practice. And so we can't just stand up at the front of the room and teach 25 kids all the same thing the same way and expect them all to learn the concepts. We really have to use the resources that we have. We have lots of other adults with paraprofessionals and inclusion teachers. We have to use those adults to help meet the needs of our kids. And so we're really focusing on doing some parallel teaching, where, you know, there's three adults in a room, and they all have a small group of kids, they're all teaching the same concept, but they're providing that support that that group of kids needs, rather than trying to do one-size-fits-all for 25 kids. So those are some of the things that we're working on as we go. Like I said, I'm new to the system, I'm just kind of getting into it, learning a lot about what's going on. Our teachers at the elementary school are hard workers, they're working their tails off, and I think we just need to kind of focus in on some of the direction of where we're going. I think we need to use our resources as a resource, not as the curriculum. We have awesome standards that are going to help us teach what we have to teach. The resources aren't always 100% accurate on what we need to teach, so we need to be good consumers of the resources. Make sure we're teaching our standards, we know our standards, and sometimes we're going to create our own things to make sure that those standards are being learned by the students in an effective way.
I just want to say something to what you were just talking about, because it really resonated with me. I felt like last year, my son was one of those kids in fifth grade, and I really, it was a very challenging year, and I felt like there was a lot of people that were stretched very thin, there was a lack of accountability in some respects. I don't want to knock anybody in particular, but what you said about how you looked at a problem, you came up with an idea of how to fix it, and then you went back into the classroom to see if it was working, and you felt like there was a little bit of success, I really want to just commend you for that. And I know everybody else deserves the same amount of praise, but just coming in as a new person and doing that, I think that's a really, that's really good that you did that. And I think that that's a great step in the right direction, because if it didn't work, then it didn't work, but you saw that it did, and I just commend you for doing that.
Thank you.
All right, I think we, Mrs. Sosha, and of course, they don't take any of these MCAS exams in pre-K, K, and one, but...
But...
But one other point to that point, that issue with, but the math, is that, I think at some point, we're going to see the Title I math is going to start to kick in, and we're going to see some changes. No, no, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mainz, you do this.
I'm done, I'm just, I just can't...
You steal everything from me. So we don't take an MCAS, but we really do teach all the foundational skills of reading. We have a very solid reading program. We do the foundations and the reading wonders, and that just showed us right through the AIMS web. We do that assessment for all of our students, grades K through four, five, we test as well. But it ranks them in colors. And so red is the bottom, below average, well below average, and we hardly had any in the red this year in our building. So that's telling me we're doing something right in reading. The math, we look at it, and with our little ones, our math, because almost the whole day is reading, it's ELA, it's writing, it's phonics, it's sounds and letters, and our math is in the afternoon, and it's after lunch. They're tired. So what the teachers have done is they put those math centers in the morning in the small group. So they still do some math instruction in the afternoon, but the follow-up and the work and the hands-on, that's all done in the morning while the kids are rotating through small group centers. So that's how we try to, you know, accommodate their tiredness, I guess, at that age. We're pushing, you know, the Title I, we have those, that as an intervention with our readers and our math students that need it, they can flex in and out of that as we test again in January. We're pushing the STEAM and the STEM activities, we have a STEM day in October. Every classroom rotated, they went to different teachers, they did math activities, they did technology. So the kids are getting exposed to all of it, hopefully that's going to build down the road for them. My staff meeting, we had teachers teaching teachers about our robotic mouses that we had from last year that we purchased. So what I found was, three teachers were using them, nobody else was using them. It's like anything else that's new. They were afraid to use it, so I had them come in, and they set the mouse up, they set up a pumpkin patch, and they had to get the mouse to get to the cheese. And all the teachers had to do it at the staff meeting. So now they're all feeling okay, they can do the mouse, and this week already, they're sending me pictures. Look, we did the mouse this week, so we're all excited about that. Then we'll move into our dash-and-dot robotics, and we'll do the same thing. Mr. Scott Villamere will come up, he's going to train a group, and then we'll use a staff meeting, and they loved it. They absolutely loved doing that together and teaching each other. We did the same thing with math. We had a workshop, October PD Day, where they had boxcars and One-Eyed Jacks, it's called, all math games with cards, dice, dominos. Absolutely loved it. So we shared different things that we've already done. We've gotten some supplies in, not everything came in yet, and so they all shared with each other. This is what I did with the dice, this is what I did with these shakers, this is what I did with dominos. So it was, it was just fantastic. So I feel like we're in the right direction, and our building, even as young as they are, we're still doing reading, math, and STEM.
All right. So, I guess this is my slide? I didn't know. Douglas Administrators, Teachers, and Support Staff continue to work diligently every day to increase student performance. We strive for excellence and commit to improving student achievement. Martin Luther King there, if you can't fly, then run, if you can't run, then walk, if you can't walk, then crawl. But whatever you do, you have to keep moving forward. And we are, I think, if there's one thing that we have done, is continue to move forward despite some obstacles.
Thank you. Very comprehensive report. I hope our lack of questions doesn't indicate a lack of interest, I think it's more of a reflection of the thoroughness of the report. So thank you.
No, and I think that it's all good, so. Being top five in many of those areas.
A component of learning. And I think we all feel similarly about that.
So, but before you leave, we have a couple of things real quickly. Can you update us on parent-teacher conferences that are coming up, please? I know that we all have them going forward, so Josh, yours is Thursday?
Our Thursday, 5:30 to 7:00.
No waiting.
No waiting. Yeah, it's generally, we would love to see parents come out for parent-teacher conferences.
I'm usually there by myself.
Yes, there's not a lot of people around.
I keep a couple.
I was going to say, I wander those halls too. They're pretty empty, but...
Even if, even if it's just to come and gawk at the water damage, I mean, come in...
Just come in.
You walk some stairs with us. So we'd love to have you.
Good. Mrs. Sosha?
So ours, we did an online sign-up for parent conferences, so ours are November 15th, the Thursday, it's 5:00 to 7:30, so we have a longer time at night. And on Friday, the 16th, they run from 12:30 until 3:00.
And the middle school, ours is on the 15th and 16th, on Thursday from 5:30 to 8:00 and on the 16th is from 11:40 to 10:00.
And at the elementary school next Thursday from 5:30 to 7? No, 8, 5:30 to 8:00, sorry?
Yes.
It's the same as yours?
5:00 to 7:30.
5:00 to 7:30, I'm sorry, 5:00 to 7:30 on Thursday and then from 12:30 to 3:00 on Friday. Each grade level sent out communication to their parents on how to sign up for a time.
So we hope the parents will come up and meet with their teachers. We did reduce it down to two days, which hopefully is a plus instead of the ongoing half-days, so that's good. Before you all leave, Ms. Sosha and Mr. Romano can maybe quickly tell you about the upcoming Veterans Day assemblies that are scheduled for Friday.
Sure, so our Veterans Day Assembly will be Friday at 8:30. I'm going to miss it, but that's, the history department puts it together, so that's, that's great. It's going to be a little bit scaled down from previous years, they just missed, Ms. Fitzpatrick, who puts it together, was also the chair of the NEAS Steering Committee and so she had other big projects she was working on, but they're still going to put something great together and I know Mr. DeNancor always comes in with a great musical program for that, so 8:30 on Friday.
And the primary school, this is our fourth year and we invite the veterans that are relatives of our children, so it's really for them. We serve them breakfast at quarter of 9:00 until about 9:30, then at 9:30, there's a show for them where our kindergarten, preschool, and first graders will sing a few songs. PTO helps out with a lot of the food items, so it really works out well, we really enjoy it. I have 50 veterans coming and about 35 guests joining them, so it will be a full cafeteria.
And if I do say so, the eats are pretty good, too.
Yes, they are.
All right, and then Mrs. Urquhart, you have one last item under the superintendent's report, crisis prevention intervention.
Yes, crisis prevention intervention. Let me tell you why I'm discussing this. If you remember, last year we had the coordinated program review and we fared very well. There were three items that we had to respond to and two of those items, we did the progress reports and we were very immediately, it was, it came down to one word that we had rung in our handbooks, we changed it, everything was fine. The next thing that I continue to respond to, to the DESE, is the concept, it's called Civil Rights 17A and it is on the concept of physical restraint. It is a mandate for every district that they have regulations within the handbooks and all of that. We have satisfied that. So, right now, we are at a level within the progress reports of partial implementation, which is a good thing. The last piece of it, something that they've, they sort of snuck in, but I'm glad that they snuck it in, is the idea of depression, self-harm, and suicide. This falls within the realm somehow of physical restraint under, under that Civil Rights 17A. So what I've done is I have met and had a lot of conversations with our school adjustment counselors as well as our school psychologists and at this time, what we're doing is we're, we're pooling everything we have, we're looking at the resources at each school, we're looking at the curriculums at each school, we're looking at everything that we currently do and we're going to take it, put it all together and what we're calling it is sort of the next-level approach, to make sure that we have a high level of response to those three areas. The one other area that I will, I will add into that is anxiety, because these, these are things, the depression, anxiety, self-harm, and suicide, in many ways, fall within that same category of each other. So, we just wanted to give you an update on that and if you guys want to have updates on what we're doing with this in the future, we can certainly provide you with that. Any questions?
Brett, do you mind me, just going back to something, something was said earlier about the parent-teacher conferences?
Sure.
I just want to also encourage people that if you don't get a time, just learning from experience, to help circumvent some problems that we do have with parents not communicating with teachers, can you reach out to the teachers to see if you can like set up a, maybe a phone conference or do something through email, but I just want to encourage parents to not be upset if they didn't get a time slot, but to actually reach out to the teachers to see if they can somehow just connect with them, because it's such a vital piece to the experience here in the school.
Very good point, they should reach out to the buildings and try to make arrangements to come in and get their questions answered. Okay, I think that, that is the end of the superintendent's report, however, some of you will be back up for guest and cameo appearances later on, don't go too far.
Okay, moving on to our school committee and subcommittee reports, the council panel report.
Yep, there was two warrants, one on 1010, there was nine batches for 110, 972. And, and 82 cents. And on 111, there was 23 batches, that was a good day, 415,881,99.
Excellent.
Those are getting paid, that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Where are we?
Our consent agenda.
I'm going to wake up here.
Yeah, I know. We have our minutes from October 17th, 2018. I read through, I didn't see any issues. I know Courtney, you're usually good about catching anything if we do have anything, so...
No, I did look, I didn't see anything.
Anyone else have anything they saw?
No.
Okay, if not, I'll be looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the October 17th, 2018 minutes for a school committee meeting.
Second.
Motion from Jillian, second by Lisa. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
An animus, thank you. Memorandum of agreement with Boston Architectural College.
We can, we can table that at this point, we don't have, I sent it back for refinement and we have not heard much back from them.
Okay.
At this point, so Josh can always reach out.
Ryan.
Ryan, that's it, someone like that.
Jack Ryan. I'll reach out to him this weekend if you want to see.
Okay.
Just to see, as I said, I had sent it back with some adjustments and they have not gotten back to us.
Okay.
I don't know if it's related to the end alliance thing or not.
Next up, we have school choice, request to close grades 6 through 8, so...
Mr. Delaney, can you come up and join us, please?
Welcome back.
Nice to be here.
How about school choice?
Again, as I spoke about earlier, we are at a point where we are trying to sustain growth and have continuity in the middle school, which I believe has been lacking in the past and right now, we have everything, I think, optimal and to add to it would strain beyond our ability to continue to perform at the level that we are. It's been an exceedingly difficult year with, again, right now, I have a teacher on jury duty, another teacher on maternity leave, and another teacher coming off a long-term medical retire. With the day-to-day illnesses and professional development days and personal days that people are allowed, we're, we have absolutely no spare capacity, so we're doing the best with what we have, which is very little, but I'm still confident that we're toeing the line and to add more students, I think would put us off kilter and put us in a direction that the district is not looking for us to go in.
What are the current class sizes now? So, 6, 7, and 8? What's the class?
105, 125, 105.
Can you say it again, sorry?
105. 105, 125, 105.
And there's four in grade...
Four, 5, and 5, but that, that 5 in 8th is foreign language and again, we're trying to build on...
But roughly like 25 kids each grade?
As I, yeah, said under...
Mid 20, so it's a combination of things, like as Brian mentioned and he's right, is that there's been some turbulence with regards to some teaching situations that we're concerned about and in the class size numbers are at a workable number, but it's not just a workable number, it's also the fact that we've had substitutes and additional. If we can hold off for the, for the duration of the year and at least try to get our feet back underneath us with the people that we've got coming in and so forth, I'll talk a little bit about that.
Two questions, do we still have new choice and requests coming in and do we have kids waiting to come in that we're trying to make a decision on?
Yeah, I don't think there has been.
And have we already, have we hit, have we not hit the caps that we set back in the summer for each grade?
Didn't we vote on each grade level?
We did vote on, the place that we left openings was the high school. I wish, I should have thought to bring it with me, I didn't remember the exact grades that, there was some, there was some availability. I think in the primary school, wasn't there something in the, in kindergarten or was it 1, I think? But Brian's was, Brian's had some availability, but at the time, we didn't anticipate that we were going to lose three staff members in a building with, with high numbers, so, you know, we could always come back and give you the exact numbers if that's, if that's...
Yeah, I was just trying to figure what the ask was up, was the next, I thought that we already kind of set caps that I thought were...
I thought we voted each grade level.
We did and that's why we're coming back is because the, although the numbers may not have gone above and beyond...
The cap, we still would like to stop kind of short of...
But if we can avoid bringing in some new teacher, new students and so forth at this point, especially in light of the fact that he's, you know, been, it's been sort of a revolving door.
Okay, makes sense. So, looking for a motion to cap school choice where we currently are?
Yeah, close school choice for grades 6 through...
Close school choice, so we have a motion from Jillian.
Second.
Second from Lisa. Any other discussion?
Nope.
No? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Delaney.
Graduation.
All right, Mr. Romano, 2019 graduation venue.
You're usually up here the whole time, so I don't know why we just don't give you a place marker here.
I know, I'm going to get a little plaque with my name on it, too.
Josh, you have two items in a row.
I know.
You've got the co-op, the co-op might be the quicker one to get through the process and then you can go to the graduation.
I was going to add a little positive one, but that's okay. If you guys are okay, we'll do, we'll do the swim and co-op first.
Okay. So, we are looking to enter a co-op with Grafton High School to do a swim team. It's a low number of students who are going to be involved, I don't know off the top of my head. There's really no cost to the district per se, students will have to do their own transportation. The home meets and the practices are at the, it's the Whittens Community Center and Whiten's, sorry, as in Whiten's.
I never say Whiten. What is it? What's the correct way to say it?
Whiten, Whiten'sville.
Whitensville, right, okay.
No, it's Whiten Community Center.
I see the connection.
But I always say, Whiten, then Whiten.
I'm from out of town. And there is a $225 athletic fee that the students would make to Grafton High School, so it's really just looking to get another opportunity for our students to want to participate in athletics and it's, I don't see us, even with our recent addition of the swimming pool on the first floor, I don't see us really having...
I said no more swimming pool, Josh. One thing I would add is that this was something that was brought up probably eight years ago, there was an interest in possibly exploring a swimming co-op, which was actually with Northbridge, I believe it was. So Grafton is, has reached out to provide us an opportunity for swimming, swimming and diving, actually.
I think that's great.
Is it a fall, winter, or all-year-round sport?
It's a winter competitive sport for high school. The kids who do it generally do it year-round, but yeah, it's, for high school, it's a winter competitive sport.
So, I'd like to move to approve entering into a cooperative swim team with Grafton High School with athletes responsible for their own transportation to and from events and for payment of the athletic fees to Grafton Public School.
Second.
Second from Jillian, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? An animus. All right, thank you.
Josh, could you at some point update us as the, as the winter season begins after Thanksgiving, get an idea as to the numbers, just to share with the committee as to what level of investment we have in that?
Yeah, the winters usually, fall usually has the most participation, but you know, it's another great opportunity for our winter sport athletes. So, so graduation, what we're exploring is looking at a different venue for our graduation. So, last year, I got to experience for myself what I watched Mr. Maines experience the year before, where I was more of a spectator, boy, boy, that really stinks that he has to deal with this and then I dealt with the same exact thing 365 days later, so when we do our graduation, there's a whole list of things that people don't like about the way our graduation goes. Parking is an issue, we have to run a shuttle bus. We have to wrestle with the whole indoor-outdoor decision and then, as happened last year and the year before, you have to make the decision relatively early in the day so you can have everything set up and so at the time when I made the decision, I was watching rain come down and then it was absolutely gorgeous that night and Mr. Maines had the same thing happen to him.
A number of times.
A number of times. There's the setup and breakdown, like there isn't really any extra help to do setup and breakdown, so Mr. Vega, myself, Mr. Stans do a lot of it. I don't enjoy doing that. There's the heat when we have the indoor graduation, there's limited seating if we do an indoor graduation, there's the handicapped accessibility if we do an outdoor graduation. There basically is an issue no matter how we do it here. So, what the graduation committee looked at was they reached out to different venues to do graduation off-site. There's a lot of schools that do this now, they rent out a facility to do their graduation and it solves a lot of those problems and so we looked at several, or Kathy Brosnan reached out to several and the one that came up that was, that really met our needs, which includes our financial limitations, was Worcester State University. So there's, there's a ton of parking there, they provide the security, so there's no need for us to bring in a police detail, they do the sound system, they do the chairs, they do the staging. Desi and I don't have to set it up. There's handicap, it's handicapped accessible, it's air-conditioned. There's a lot of great things that go with it, there is a little bit of an expense to it, so the downside is there's, there is an increase in expense. It's still cheaper than when we were renting staging a few years ago, so it still comes in under what we were spending on graduation a few years ago. The other thing, of course, is that, you know, families have to get to Worcester State University and that's the other sort of downside to it. So what, what I think we're kind of looking at is your blessing to move this, to present it to students and parents to get their feedback on it, because I didn't want to, I didn't want to fire up parents and students if this becomes a really negative thing until I had made sure that this was something that you guys were going to have an interest in approving. So, if there is an overwhelmingly negative response to this, because I know that change is difficult, you know, we, change is always scary, change is always, you know, we're breaking a tradition. What I would offer is that if the tradition that you have makes a lot of people mad, maybe you should look at another tradition. And, and I know, having been at the receiving end of it, that our graduation makes a lot of people mad, whether we do it indoor, whether we do outdoor, whatever, there's always, there's things that people are going to complain about. And so I found a solution that eliminates a lot of those, that eliminates the issues that we have with it and I know that there's a negative to it, but it solves a lot of positives and so we're really looking to make this something that we do, not that, you know, again, like I said, I know that it is difficult when you have change, but after a year or two, it just becomes part of what you do. So when we went from white gowns for the girls and blue gowns for the boys, that caused quite a stir, too, and now nobody even thinks about it and it's, how many years, Mr. Maines? Just a few years?
Couple of years, yeah.
Yeah. And so, you know, it's always tough to be the first class, but you know, when it becomes the new tradition, it usually helps and I think people do tend to forget in between years, having to take that shuttle bus over and having to sit inside where it's hot and having to make room for the wheelchair and having to pick which cousin gets to go because you only get nine tickets, eight tickets when it's indoors.
Josh, to share with you the cheese and cold-cut platter that I had made at one point that nobody would get out of line to have cheese and cold cuts be in drinks because they wanted to make sure that they get a better seat.
It's like the Tickle Me Elmo toy drive, when parents get to, when we finally open those doors, can be kind of brutal.
It's actually, it was pretty, I felt very unsafe, I'm going to be really honest. I felt very unsafe in that gym because everybody was so close that, God forbid, there was an emergency, I don't know, I just, I kept thinking, I kept looking at all the exits and everything, it was just so many people cramped in a tiny space.
It's about, it's about 900, maybe, maybe 1,000.
It's, yeah.
That we got in there, there are four exits, four ways in and out, but still, you're right.
A lot of people.
We blocked with fans and...
Yeah, it was, they were all blocked, the egresses were blocked.
I actually went to the Worcester State and took a tour of the venue with Kathy Brosnan. We went out there, met the gentleman. It's a beautiful facility, it's only two years old. old. I took pictures of it. I could pass it around to you. It's, it's huge. It's a good size. They have an up, they have a track upstairs that looks down on the basketball court where everything would be. They even said that if we wanted to bring in our local cable access, they could, they can go in and they can...
Mr. Villamere.
There you go.
They could set up up top and videotape the whole ceremony live if they wanted to.
Wow. And we can even have the piper lead them in.
So, start the bagpipe if you want to.
I think there's a lot of positives. I mean, I think, I agree that, you know, I've, I've gone to graduation here and it was very hot and it was indoors. At the same time, I'll be really honest, I have reservations about it being in Worcester. If it's Friday night, traffic, that there's, there's nothing good about that.
We did reach out to a number of places. I don't know how many places that we, we reached out to. We even called...
Holy Cross, Nichols, Bryant's, the Hanover Mechanics, DCU Center. Holy Cross doesn't do...
No, I know we're limited. I mean, we're, we're in Douglas after all. We're, we're limited to, you know.
Well, some of those places are limited to, like Nichols, I think they do their graduation under a tent. I mean, we...
Same thing, really.
Be the same thing. And this Holy Cross doesn't have a facility large enough?
Not large enough. DCU Center is like $7,000.
DCU is expensive, yeah.
I would be curious to see what the response from parents and students is. I'm, I'm a little nervous about the, the motion as written here to, to actually go ahead and approve the change. I, I would be curious to see what the, what the response from, from the parents and the kids is.
So, could we put a condition to the, the motion? Courtney and Kevin, you might know better. Could we put a rider, say, to the, to the motion pending the response of the parents, teachers?
I think, I think, well, I, I think you could. My question to you would be, would you rather have that information before you made the motion?
Yes. I definitely would.
That's what I'm kind of hearing is that you would rather have that information before making the motion.
And to me, I, I would, I would like to have the information of, because I think the idea of moving it is, is an excellent one. I think, I think I would be curious to see what the response to telling them it's, assuming it's still at 5:30 on Friday in Worcester, you know, what the, because I do think that really the only drawback is the traffic, you know, trying, trying to get people from here to there.
So, the, for the students, I would suggest that we would be taking some, some buses, coach buses so that they, we, we ensure that they're there and they're in, they're in plenty of time and ready for the graduation. But the, the question becomes, parents may have difficulty in...
I'm just thinking, if you have people, you know, traveling to get here and then...
I mean, that would break tradition as well. So, if you really want to, if you really want to break a bunch of traditions, do it on a, do it on a Sunday afternoon at 1:00 maybe, which some, some schools are doing. Some schools do it at 1:00 on a Sunday afternoon in the Mechanics Hall or Hanover Theater. Those are being used. I know that, as you reached out to a lot of those places, some of them are just absolutely price prohibitive. But Worcester State does provide, I'd say, a, a, a nice venue.
We were, we were shocked at how inexpensive it came in, you know, for what we were getting.
Do you...
What does, what does that do with, I mean, just remembering there were multiple rehearsals leading up to it, you know? So, I'm assuming you, you're going to rehearse here with the idea of transferring it there.
We can get in there for a Thursday rehearsal, too. So, we're the only ones using it.
So, then, but then we would have to transport the kids up there for a rehearsal?
Correct.
Well, I mean, we are sending them out in the world to be adults.
Oh, yeah, well.
You know, they're, they're hours away at that point from us saying that they're grownups and...
I'm not disagreeing, but I know that we've, we've talked about that in, in other aspects, having kids drive and that wasn't okay, so.
Yeah, I would, they, I wouldn't have them drive if we would have to, we would have to transport them there and back for that rehearsal. Again, it doesn't have to be a coach bus. They, they're used to riding yellow school buses. They can take a school bus out to Worcester and back. They take them to games. I don't see why they can't take it to Worcester.
Has to be a coach.
And, you know, another point that was brought up, too, is the handicap accessibility. It's another part that's talking about unsafe. It's not easy to, to get onto that lawn also.
Oh, it's not.
It's, it's, I feel like we're...
They have to go down like the ramp, right?
Yeah, but that's not easy. That's a long walk and I'm seeing more as our parents are aging. It's like they can't even go to soccer games or anything. They have to sit at the very top. And I, I just feel like we could be also opening up ourselves to potential, you know, issues.
Well, your, your point is well taken because as you know, we've run, we've been running, when, when we've been able to get outside, running golf carts. But, I mean, you could fit two people in a golf cart, but who, who wants to be the person driving around with two 95-year-old grandmothers down that hill and across the field? And, and I know that it's, it's...
I think Jared would do it.
There's been some interest, interesting sights when graduation was taking place and when it was over of trying to get those people back up the hill in, in the golf carts at the same time. So, I, I mean, when it's outdoors, it is, it's, it's nice. It is just, just having 10 years of experience with it, man, oh man, it's, it's frustrating.
So, it sounds like we're all supportive and...
Hold on, I just have one quick question. So, my question is, you've done all of this, you know, you went to Worcester State and now you need parent feedback. When do you have to commit to Worcester State before somebody else comes in and swoops it out from underneath your feet?
The sooner the better, so...
Can we, can we make a phone call tomorrow and ask them if, if we could get a two-week extension and let's make a determination by the next meeting?
Yeah, so I can, I'll ask Kathy to reach out to them and, and get them to hold it for us before we send them a check. And I'll, I'll have the, the class advisors survey the, the teachers, rather, the students and their parents, so...
How are you gonna do that?
We'll do like a Google form or something.
Like, go out to like parents or to the kids?
We can have it go out to parents, too. We'll, we'll have the kids. That's a good point.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm saying. The communication gap there?
Yeah, I can, I mean, I have the parents' email, so I can, I can do it while I'm...
Send a Google survey?
Yeah, and I can send it to parents. I just have to, so tomorrow when I'm doing boring Army stuff, I'll sit down with my laptop and put it together.
Just a little curveball. The next scheduled meeting would be the 21st, which is the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. I don't know if the committee is planning on meeting on that Wednesday. Could look to move it to the, to the, to the day before the Tuesday, the 20th, because you have time to do that.
Well, what if we, can we...
I think waiting until some of my troubles...
Can we just say, can we take like a, I don't want to say a straw poll, but just see who's in support of this? And I mean, if we find out that parents are like absolutely no way possible, this is a horrible idea, then...
Then we'll drop it, yeah.
Then we just forget about, I just, I, I don't want, just want us to miss out on a date.
Yeah, I mean, if, if this is something that's going to cause like me to be like public enemy number one on Diane McDouglas, then I'll, I'll...
Hey, I was Friday, it's your turn.
Sometimes we have to make decisions in the best interest of what we think is right.
I do, and I don't, I don't want to be the one who's sitting here saying, no, I think it's a great idea. I, I've been racking my brain trying to think of if there's any other, like, non-academic facility, you know, anything that's got a haul.
We tried a lot of places and, you know, you still need someplace that can do 1,100, 1,200 people, so. I'll bring you the data on, on what the parents and the kids say and we'll, then I'll maybe help you guys inform your decision. I really just wanted to make sure that it wasn't something you guys were going to be completely against before I risk the, the anger of 90 seniors and their parents and Uncle Murray and Grandma.
With the 100,000 that are watching at home, they're already talking about it, Mr. Romano.
Probably already on TV.
How much would the deposit be and is it refundable?
Is it $1,000?
25%.
So, it's about a thousand.
About $1,000.
And I'm assuming non-refundable if we canceled or? I did not ask.
Well, that's, I was gonna suggest that. If it's non-refundable, then, then, then it's an issue. But if it's refundable, would it make sense to just?
Book it and go to them.
And then, so, do you know if it's refundable?
Still survey and, you know.
Don't remember that.
We have to be real careful with the language on that, too.
I think it's just the deposit to hold that date. I, I don't remember if you said refundable or non-refundable.
Can we make that phone call?
Yeah, we'll ask that with it, too.
Yeah, I'll have Kathy contact on the mark. He's a great one. Yeah, he's a nice guy.
So, I think generally we're supportive, but we know there might be resistance and we just want to... Send an email to Kathy.
Do we want to consider the meeting on the 20th rather than the 21st and try to keep the, the agenda as light as possible with this being the primary focus?
I just noticed that as well. Either, or do we want to go out a full week and then have back-to-back on the 28th and, and the 5th was the other option I was looking at? So, I don't know what, if folks are traveling that week for Thanksgiving or what, so...
So, the issue is that, I guess if, if, if Mr. Vega can reach out to Worcester State or Kathy can reach out to Worcester State, A, is it refundable? If it's, if it's refundable, then let's just secure the date and, and we can have further conversation. Then we don't, we could, I don't, I just don't, I don't anticipate you're going to want to meet on the 21st. You could meet on the 28th, but then you'd be back-to-back weeks, the 28th and the first week in December.
I'm, I'm available the 20th?
I feel like I'm here every week anyways. I don't know about you guys.
Soccer season is over. Massimo's season will start.
Soccer season is not over yet.
That's right.
I know, there's a board selectmen meeting that night.
Yeah, well, there would be a board, a board selectman, but that, they don't usually normally attend our meetings, so...
I'm available the 20th. I'll leave it up.
So, to, to wrap this back up, Mr. Vega or Mrs. Brosnan is going to inquire, if it is refundable, then we've got the go-ahead to make a deposit, secure the date.
Yes.
Follow it up with surveys to students, surveys to parents, bring the feedback back to the committee. And I would imagine we will probably have an audience finally for one of our school committee meetings to discuss pros and cons of moving the graduation.
To put it on Facebook for you, too.
Anybody who's opposed, we have to come and help set up chairs.
We'll move the agenda, the meeting from the 21st to the 28th.
Everyone okay with the 20th?
I'm good.
And in the spirit of the holiday, I know we all be very thankful for a light agenda.
Yep. Good, because we got, we put a lot of stuff on this one, so it should be...
No kidding.
Jaden, the day for the meeting?
Yeah, no, we're so that they know. We're gonna make sure people know.
Well, it's gonna be posted, right? Gonna post it in advance.
Isn't it seven days?
I'm just, you know, just want to make sure that people are aware so that if we're changing the day...
I think we'll be, we've done it before. We have done it before.
This shouldn't be a problem. We're well within the timeframe, so...
Absolutely.
Is there a BOS meeting that night?
There is. Again, it's typically not too much conflict and crossover of the people that attend there versus the people that don't attend here.
So, we won't take a consent on this proposal, but we are in verbal agreement that we will explore the possibility of securing the date if it's a refundable deposit.
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
Next up.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
We have PTO donation and I feel bad because Ms. Johnson was here earlier and it looks like we had, she'd had enough of us at some point.
Did leave a little bit of a note.
Yeah, oh, she did, okay.
She did apologize that she did have to leave. She needed to pick up a, a child and, but she wanted to express her gratitude for the committee being, willing to acknowledge their efforts, so...
I'll just read the, I don't know, the memo that we have here. So, to whom may concern, I am writing on behalf of the Douglas Elementary PTO. The PTO would like to make a donation in the amount of $3,538 to Douglas Primary School for the purchase of 12 Apple iPads. A check made payable to the Town of Douglas is included, along with the original quote from Apple. If there are any additional questions, please do not hesitate to contact me.
Thank you.
So, a couple of other things to add with that. One is that you're, you're going to be happy to know that Mrs. Souza attended a conference and guess what she won? She won a cart that matches these iPads. So, they'll be in a cart in a charging station out of the clear blue.
Wow, that's great.
So, figure. However, $500 value.
Nice.
Win or take all.
What a cool prize to win.
Yeah.
I know.
Turns out to be a great one.
No kidding, right?
So, along with that, this morning at our admin meeting, Mrs. Sosha and Mr. Bell had also, and I would like to share with you, that the boosters have, I'm sorry, the PTO has done a number of additional things. So, if I could, I gave you a copy of it, but let me run through it real quickly. Two gym mats at the primary school, classroom math materials from, from the box car in One Eye Jack's presentation, providing our students with math activities at the primary school, some STEM manip, STEM manipulative, yeah, stuff of STEM for the preschool at the primary school as well. A complete Bose audio system, which will be presented on Friday as a, it's maiden voyage.
That is superintendent's office.
Playing some heavy metal. Two dash and dot robots at the primary school, a new laminator. You cannot go without a laminator at the elementary school, a new laminator, additional financial support to help us with some field trips for the elementary school, STEM and math resources at the elementary school, and books for the classroom at the elementary school. So, when you could, could accept all of that, that would be great. And obviously, thanks to the PTO. That's just tremendous.
Yeah, the group there is doing a great job currently. Previous groups have all done a great job. They're always looking for volunteers, so if you're out there listening, please help them out. Better job with more support, so, but we really appreciate it.
So, do we need a, a vote to accept all that?
Is that all we need on this is?
Accepted donation from PTO as presented.
As presented?
So moved.
So moved.
Motion from Julie, second from Jillian. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Who said that? I'm sorry.
Jillian. So, we have unanimous, we accepted the donation. Thank you. Mr. Delaney, one more time.
He was sleeping out there.
A .2 FTE library paraprofessional position.
We have a, a media center that is fully stocked, laying fallow, and I'd like to animate it once again. And again, as it's described in the agenda, we have the pre-approved funding that's still available in our budget from last year and have some ideas about who might be able to staff.
Budget from this year.
This year.
What did I say?
You said budget from last year, but it's from this year.
Very late. It's been a very long day. Let's move on. So, so, again, we're, we're just looking to have the students be able to access our stacks, our resources.
What is currently there at the library? Is there a .8 person?
Nobody.
There's nobody in there?
It's fallow. It's being, it's unused. It is, there's a deficient of a human being.
So, there's, that's, that's not considered like a, a special anymore?
No.
We, we, if you remember, we, we made the leap to, to make our specialists full-time. And in order to do that, that was, we, we felt that health, full-time health.
Prep time there.
So, I'd like to...
Those specials, those full, the full-time specials.
I, I don't even feel that this is almost a discussion.
So, we'd be literally bringing someone into work $52.
As it turns out, we have someone in district who is working as a .8 and the building is exactly two feet away and will be able to come over and provide that service.
It's not a class. It's a, it's a, a service to, to circulate the books.
No instruction. It's managing the, the, the materials.
Okay.
So, I'd like to move to approve a .2 FTE paraprofessional position for the Douglas Middle School Library. The approximate cost for this position is $17.50 and it will be paid from the general fund budget.
Second.
Motion from Julie, second from Jillian. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you for your support.
Okay. School Business and Operation Managers Report.
Okay, so I have some transfers and reclassifications for you this evening. And do the transfers first. They are all requests by administrators. The first one is for some purchase of technology from Donna Souza. And the next couple are just some small deficits being taken care of from the middle school. And at the high school, it's moving funds around for textbooks within their lines.
Okay. Any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve FY 2019 budgetary transfer number three, school committee meeting November 7, 2018.
Second. Motion from Jillian, second from Julie. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Unanimous. Thank you.
I also have for you this evening, reclassification, actually, it's one. I should have said FY 2019 reclassification. I decided the NEASK, it only happens once every 10 years. And there's quite a lot that's spent on NEASK. And it was getting really hard to figure out where, what account to put them in because if you put it in the principal's account, like we, the, for the bill that we're reclassing here, it, it kind of looks like either Desi and/or, you know, Josh are spending $5,726.88 going to hotels. We might wonder why. So, So, you know, there's a whole bunch, there was, there's another like $8,000 or $6,000 worth of expenditures, there's a lot of expenditures. So, I just decided, I called Jean, it was kinda bugging me all weekend, so I came in and I, I asked her, you know, kinda looked at the account numbers, the object codes that we had for the high school principal function code and there was one number that was left, so I asked if she could just, we could use that number, the 53008. We're gonna call it NEASK accreditation, that way we won't have to keep explaining why in 2018 we spent so much money in these lines, in the principal lines, it'll just say NEASK accreditation and then even 10 years from now, if people wanna find out what we spent on NEASK accreditation, they can look back on the budget report and it'll be right there. It just was driving me nuts, I couldn't stand putting it, or thinking about putting it in these other lines, it just wouldn't make any sense.
Makes sense.
That's what we're doing. So, that's the only thing we paid and we just need to reclassify.
I'm gonna let you sleep tonight by doing this. Motion to approve fiscal year 2019 reclassification, school committee meeting, November 7th, 2018.
Motion from Julie.
Second.
Second from Jillian, any other discussion? Nope, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
And the only other thing that I have is the end of the year report, as I, as I had spoken about earlier, has been done, sent a bunch of things to the auditors and the auditors think they'll be, believe it or not, even though we had such a strict deadline to get it in, DESC has not issued the, the audit compliance criteria for the auditors, so they're hoping it'll come out in December, so they'll be coming to do that audit after that. The student activity fund audits, and that's both the middle school and the high school, has been pretty much completed, it's under first review, they might have a few questions, so that draft should be coming out soon as well, so I'll probably be presenting that to you. I'm thinking within a month, the student activity one, and then it'll be probably several months before we have the end of the year report audit. Just wanted to update you on that.
Okay, thank you.
And that's it.
That's all she wrote.
Excellent. Any other questions, Courtney? So, that brings us to, topic's not anticipated, I did just, to bring up one brief thing. Okay, we had executive session last time in regards to Mr. Means and trying to extend him beyond this year. So, we, no secret for us, we, we agree that we'd like to extend him at this point. Me and Mr. Means met a few days after that and he's also agreed that he would like to stay on with us, so we just need to, you know, negotiate a contract extension at this point, which we will do over the next several weeks, but we had a deadline of November 1st to come to agreement on whether we wanted to continue to be working together and happy to say that we both like to keep doing that.
So, the only issue for me is that if, if I am gonna retire, it's six months and there is a process, so by the beginning of the year, I would need to stop submitting my paperwork so that I wouldn't run into a situation where I would retire and not be getting my, my salary, so...
So, we will have a brief executive session tonight just to discuss contract extension and that's it. You have another item?
I have one item. Julie, when I saw you recently at the soccer game, I wanted to update you, I said I would update you on what happened with the teaching staff and how we were trying to address it, so Brian, if you've got one more second to come up to the podium, because there's been a lot of changeover.
Boy.
So, as you, as you are aware, Mr. Millio is on a, an extended jury duty situation, which we now believe is gonna be even longer.
Wow.
However, the position is being manned by a gentleman named John Vasta, who is a retired high school math teacher, certified math teacher, and has been in the building and is teaching. So, I know your concern was how are we gonna address it? So, the upside there is that it's being addressed by a talented and a certified math teacher for all those students on her time out of the building. She has been in and out of the building and they are communicating, so there is, there is that going on. We know that Ms. Christian, the wonderful teacher that she was, unfortunately, because of some family issues, is not able to return, has, has formally retired. Brian did a number of interviews and if you want to maybe update this, the committee as to your hiring?
We have a wonderful new teacher, her name is Ms. Selena Amon. She is a certified experienced middle school science teacher. She will be starting on November 16th. I do recognize that that is a half-day, but we also have parent-teacher conferences. I thought it'd be a great time to say, here is your new teacher as well as meet as many parents as we can that day. I have not told the students yet because the gentleman that we have in there is doing a phenomenal job and the students are focused and leveled off and I want them to continue to give him the respect as their classroom teacher at this time, so this is, uh, news if we could keep it between us and the millions of people watching at home.
But I want you to be aware of that. And then the other piece of it was that, as Brian just mentioned, the gentleman who's been, been filling in, in the science is, is also, Ms. Miller threw us a curveball and actually left a week earlier than anticipated on her maternity, on doctor's orders, so the gentleman who is in the science was, is earmarked to go in and, and take the history class, he is also a certified history teacher. So, he will be going in there as soon as, on the 16th, when Ms. Amon comes in, he'll transition over there. And so, the good news is that they're all being staffed by certified educators going forward.